Thank you. Please stand by.
No.
The chairperson, press the star key now.
You know me too well.
Please enter your chairperson passcode and press sound.
It's been ten years.
To start your conference now, press star or this, your conference will now begin. You can report your call by pressing star two at any time to start or end your recording.
No, the only person that ever knocked it over was what's-his-face who had proceeded to scold me.
So you're like Hannah again?
Yeah, I did. We're all over because it's all my fault.
Everything is recorded.
He didn't do anything. I wasn't even there.
All the devices are on.
My responsibility.
It's on?
Okay, we've got about 25 trucks.
We were, we had a set of plats out in the park. And we told by the very, so if I come through with coffee, I go, oh, and look at Pam. They checked it for you.
Nope, we were great.
No beverages.
Oh, well, happens in the best of times.
Yes, and offices.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It is 3:00 P.M., Thursday, November 17th, 2016, time of the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a forum. Please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. If you have a noise-making machine like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have a unique situation this afternoon following the direction of our attorney. The chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to, number one, add an agenda item as item 5E1, remove from the table consideration of accepting the fourth amended engineer's report for the Pelican Preserve Series 2003 project, 2013 special assessment revenue refunding bond dated November 16, 2016, AKA the report, and the adoption of a resolution accepting the report, and two, add as an item of the agenda, to the agenda, as agenda item 5E2, consideration and action accepting the report and the adoption of a resolution accepting the report. May I have a motion?
I will make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
And I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote five zero, Mr. Manager. Thank you all very much. Mr. Attorney, have I completed my duties at this point?
Yes, sir, and I think what you may want to do also is provide anybody, any member of the audience, the opportunity if they wish to sign a, a signup slip for items 5E1 and 5E2, to do that, you know, while other items are being taken care of.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Anyone who wishes to speak on the items that we just mentioned regarding the fourth amended engineer's report may do so by signing a slip at the rear of the room and giving it to our manager.
Is that right now or after, sort of, after the presentation?
I would suggest they could do it now, but if someone else wants to between now and the item being considered, I think you would allow them to speak and sign up.
We're very, very, very flexible. Do you want?
I'd perhaps like to talk after, I hear what the reason is, because I don't know what company.
It'd be fine if you can just have a signup slip by that time, Mr. Tinkle, and then...
You've already presented a signup slip, I presume?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, if I may, may I recognize Mr. Tinkle to come to the podium at this time?
Yes, Mr. Tinkle's up first.
Thank you.
And then also, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Tinkle can then speak when the item comes up.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to defer on that. And I may not, because I'm just not that familiar with it. I had two items. First, I want to be the first to thank Pam and Gary. Pam, four years, long time, lot of work, lot of effort. Gary, a lot, a lot of time, eight years. Your reprieve is around the corner. Thank you very much, both of you. The only other item I had tonight was carrying forth a issue that came up at the candidate's debate at Hampton Park, and that is the issue of the, I don't know what you call it out there, the picket fence and the wire that goes through it that separates the FPL easement. Can we do something to make that a little bit more presentable and representative of Gateway? It looks pretty shaggy. Posts are sticking over, the cable looks like it could snap if a fly landed on it. It, it just doesn't look good. But that's all I had. Thank you.
Isn't that owned by WCI?
The fee simple title is owned by WCI to the FPL easement. And we have drainage, because we have easements for the water management features in it, I believe.
I think we put the fence in, that's why I asked this one morning.
Well, maybe we need to amend Danny's amendment a second.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any?
There are two more. One is, is from Phil who has, he would like to talk about item 5B. I don't know if you want to do it now or wait until after, till we get to 5B.
Well, this is a good time.
Okay.
Phil Meezy, 9296 Tri-S Drive, representing P-PAC today. And I start with a somewhat an apology to the board. I know you've heard an awful lot about golf carts and bicycles in Pelican Preserve, but it is a matter of safety and it's a matter of great importance to the people in Pelican Preserve. Today, I'd like to just focus on one thing, and that is the, the proposal to remove the bicycle chevrons along Pelican Preserve Boulevard. We, the P-PAC, is, are working on recommendations because we feel that the whole issue of golf carts and bicycles within, regulations within Pelican Preserve is not a settled matter. We're, we are working on a recommendation that we are going to bring forth to the board, but it's going to be delayed by two things. Number one, we want to do a traffic study, which the board directed us to do some months ago, and we also want legal review of what we are going to propose. But the proposal, one of the things in the proposal will be that the shoulder lanes, the two outside lanes on Pelican Preserve Boulevard be exclusively for bicycles. We think we're on strong ground making that recommendation, but we need to bring it forth to you with all of the support that we have for it. But in the meantime, it seems to us that it doesn't make a lot of sense to remove the chevrons, and then if indeed we make this recommendation that the lanes be exclusively for bicycles, we're going to have to put the chevrons back on again. We'd just like to avoid the cost of doing that. So what we're asking is that, right now, the chevrons have been there for almost two years. Admittedly, they were placed there without the approval of the board, but they're not causing any particular problems at this juncture, and, and we're not, their exclusive use of the lane for bicycles is not being enforced. So we think it makes a lot of sense not to spend the money to remove the chevrons at this point and then possibly have to put them back, but that to wait for the recommendation, and if the recommendation is not, you don't, we decide not to have that lane for the exclusive use of bicycles, then we can remove the chevrons at that point. But to do it now and then perhaps have to put them back, we think does not make a lot of sense. So that's my comment on that.
And Phil, that's, that's the P-PAC's...
That is the P-PAC stance on that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Phil.
Mm-hmm.
Up next is Kathy Flaherty.
Who?
Kathy Flaherty, 12566 Ivory Stone Loop. I just wanted to thank both Pamela and Gary for their service, and we, and all the residents do appreciate what you have done. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to consider a resolution, item 3A, discharge, excuse me, dissolving the Landscape Advisory Committee. April, I think you put this on the agenda. Would you like to quickly summarize it for us?
Well, as you know, the Landscape Advisory Committee has, has struggled with, I guess, regaining its momentum as far as what it was originally intended. With that said, we have a significant amount of focus now via the roadway landscape master plan. And so within that plan, we have scheduled to call in the neighbors, the HOAs, the organizations that are in the buffer areas, and create a work group, committee, what, what have you, and to have that very narrow focus of what we're concentrating on. And I think ultimately that might have been what the original intent was, is the overall beautification of the neighborhood. So with that said, I was hoping, and I know Tony's going to work with me as far as working on some legalities to make sure that we approach that structure correctly, but I, I think that we're going to be more effective without the confines of a sanctioned committee.
Thank you, April. Board members have questions for April on this item?
No, I just, one, one quick thing. I think when the new officers take their seats, I think there'll be an opportunity for maybe one to be what I would consider an executive sponsor or someone that, that you, you know, can tap into, and we would keep, or at least reach out to the folks that, that have participated in that committee to continue to get their feedback moving forward.
Right, and that will still be there via, you know, we're just, it's, it's almost like new branding, you know, for the cause.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other? May I have a motion for approval?
Tomoos.
Second, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and further conversation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote five zero, Mr. Manager. Thank you, April. Thank you. Now we're ready for item four, the consent agenda, items A, B, and C. I haven't seen the maintenance inspection report. Am I the only one?
It, the maintenance inspection was sent out electronically, and I believe they're working on getting some hard copies right now.
Oh, I see. All right. Does anyone have items? Say again.
Oh, I was looking for it. I have my email.
Oh, you've got it?
It just so happened to have it.
It was sent yesterday.
Does anyone have items that they want to talk about in what is euphemistically called the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve agenda items four, A, B, and C.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote five zero, Mr. Manager. Business items, item five. We're not going to be able to take this as a group, I'm sure. The first is consideration of a resolution amending the general fund budget for fiscal year 2016. That's item 5A. Thank you for taking a spot at the podium.
Stephen Bloom, Severn Trent. This agenda item is kind of a housekeeping item for you. Basically, if any of your funds go over budget for the year in total, you have to do a budget amendment within 60 days after year-end. The only fund that this occurred in was the general fund in Stony Brook, 004. In general, that there was no real deficiencies with the budget, with the exception of a capital outlay line that was done for, I believe it was, paveways. It was $62,762. The funding for that would come from the fund balance reserve. It was approved prior to spending, and like I said, this is just a housekeeping item in order to make it official with your budget document.
Thank you, Stephen. This resolution appears at page 32, if you want to put it up on the screen for the audience. As Stephen indicated to us, this is really a housekeeping item, so that the auditors and everybody else are happy with what hap, with what's happened during fiscal year 16, which has already ended. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Please ask your question.
So now what's the remaining balance of Stony Brook's reserves?
Yeah, if you roll it through. Basically, it's $132,824. At the bottom of Exhibit A, you can see the fund balance as of the end of the year.
Where are we at?
You're at the right page, just go down a little bit. There you go.
So that's after the deduction?
That's after the deduction. It also includes all the activity for the year.
Okay. May I have a second? Motion to approve this.
I have a motion and a second.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote five zero, Mr. Manager. Item 5B deals with the bicycle chevrons that Mr. Meezy talked about earlier. April, do you want to give us a real perspective on this?
Well, as, as we all know, this has been a heated conversation. At this time, we, we did meet, Chris met with, they had a meeting with the city of Fort Myers, and it was determined that, as Mr. Meezy said, that they inappropriately put the chevrons on there. And so at this time, I believe the original cost of those, of the chevrons was around, I think it was like 465 bucks, less, less than $500. And so at this time, just to put this to rest until we can move forward, we, I'm just recommending that we paint over the bicycle chevrons until a further date they can address the issue as a whole relative to the community and bring something back to the board for, for approval to be, to be done differently. But right now, they're not supposed to be on there, and it's something that we could put to rest if we just painted over them.
Who put them up?
I, I'm not sure.
P-PAC approved it without, without your consent.
And did WCI do it, or how was it? Who did it?
Who did it? Well, the HOI, HOA, the master HOA, which does all our work.
Phil, would you mind coming up, because in case there's some questions for you, you can be on record?
The, they were, they were painted, the P-PAC passed a, a recommendation that, that they be painted, and it was, it was done, as a lot of our work is done, by the, the management company that works for the HOA. That's the way, that's the way work is done. So we approved something that shouldn't have been approved at the time. I acknowledge that, freely acknowledge that. I just don't think we should waste $500 taking them off and putting them back on again.
And it's P-PAC's position that they're, that they're not supposed to be there?
P-PAC would agree that they are not, at this point...
At this point in time.
Supposed to be there. However, we are going to make a recommendation that will probably recommend that they be, be put there, because we think we're on strong ground in making that recommendation, but we're not ready to bring that forward to you.
And do you have a timeline for...
Well, we, we've got to complete a traffic study. We are going to put the specs of the traffic study together this next Tuesday. It'll probably take a month or two. One of the reasons the traffic study was delayed was because we wanted to do it in season. We will now be doing it in season, but it'll probably take a month or two for the traffic study to be done and for us to come back to you.
So...
But we think another two months with the chevrons there, they've been there for two years, it's not going to hurt anybody, and it just doesn't, we'd rather not spend our money taking them off and possibly putting them back on again.
And one more question. In your opinion, do the existing chevrons, I think you just stated this, but I want to be clear.
Yeah.
The existing chevrons do not pose any risk or liability or any concern to, to the community?
I don't believe so. No, because right now, you have, to a certain extent, dual use of that lane by both golf carts and...
Right, which is...
And bicycles, because we have not for some time said that the golf carts aren't allowed in there. We've just, we've just left the question open.
That's all I have.
Any other questions?
I guess I do have one other question. Since this board never approved the chevrons being placed there and the HOA did this, now you're asking for our approval to paint over them?
No, well, April's asking for that.
Yeah, that's the, so I'm, I guess I'm confused why that then becomes our responsibility. Wouldn't that go back to the HOA?
Well, only, yeah, I mean, it was funded out of, out of the funds, the OO2 account, the P-PAC account.
So they paid for it?
We paid for it, and, and we would, we would have to pay for them having them removed. And so we're, you know, we're, I think April's just trying to do it in a way that it should be done, to have it officially done, but we just disagree that it should be done at this point. We just don't think it makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I guess I'd like to hear from Gary and Bill about this, since this is your community.
It's not that it's a...
You're not going to be quiet at the last meeting of the...
Yeah.
Did you think I would?
No, I didn't, to be honest.
Having said that, we, we live in the same community, but, but with all due respect, Bill has a personal agenda on this item. The majority of the homeownership in Pelican Preserve are all people that are members of the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, and that's 1,016 people, or 1,016 doors. Bill and I, even though we are at total odds on this, my thing is to go with the majority of the community. Bill, on the other hand, is going with the majority of Bill. Why don't you speak for yourself, not for me? I'll be able to speak for myself, thanks. Well, we've heard you speak, Bill, so it's, it'd be like telling Donald Trump that he didn't say something. So, yes, there is this commonality of the fact that we live in the same community, even live on the same street, but after that...
I'm just asking you...
My, my position is, A, and having driven into the community this afternoon and out of the community before I came here, watching people and that bike lane and cars and thinking, and especially now, we've had a tremendous insurgence of residents, occupants in the community. And you can easily see when you're driving down Pelican Preserve Boulevard just how important that becomes in trying to keep people safe. So I'm in line with the advisory committee. I would urge that we table it until, if you want to give them a date certain, which I'm kind of infamous for that, too, put the fire at somebody's feet to make sure that it gets done, then I could support that as well. And if they need two months, then give them two months, but make sure that they get it done. May I have a question?
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, this item has caused more consternation than just about anything that I, you know, so, been involved with. My neighbors and I don't see this is exact, in exactly the same light, but I will tell you this. First of all, it was acknowledged that, that P-PAC did not have the authority to have those bicycle chevrons painted on there. Under the Florida law, a piece of roadway that has chevrons, bicycle chevrons on there, are then only permitted for bicycles. Pelican Preserve is a golf cart community. We have over 400 golf carts in Pelican Preserve, and up until the PPAC team decided three to two to do some painting, those people who have golf carts were, for the most part, driving them in the, in the four-foot lane on either side of Pelican Preserve Boulevard. Now, not all of the people in Pelican Preserve who own golf carts and who use golf carts are in fact golfers. A goodly number of them are in their late 70s or 80s and no longer able to play golf, but still use their golf carts to go from their residence to their pound center, which they pay dearly for, for arts and crafts and meetings of one sort or another, and physical education and facilities. Insisting that the bike, that that four-foot lane be available only for bicycles is what they're trying to do means that the golf cart owners then have to vie against the automobiles and the trucks that are using Pelican Preserve Boulevard, not only for residential purposes but also for construction purposes. And Mr. Meezy has been at that podium requesting approval from this body to, to actuate an agreement with the Fort Myers Police Department to enforce the speed limit on Pelican Preserve Boulevard since it is so routinely ignored. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I submit that making 70 and 80-year-old folks compete with automobiles and trucks that are routinely disobeying our speed limit is going to result in a disaster, and when the attorneys start looking around, you can bet your bottom dollar where they're going to start looking. So I want to go on record as saying that I favor, I am in favor of getting rid of those darned things. That means, once they're gone, that the bicycles can ride wherever they want on Pelican Preserve Boulevard, in the four-foot lane, in one of the driving lanes as they see fit, and the golf cart owners can also do what they want to do.
So I just have one, one thing. I don't think anyone's in disagreement that the chevrons should not be there, based on the meetings with Fort Myers. They're not supposed to be there. For me, it's more of a timing issue. I would, I mean, my personal opinion is, if you're going to make a change, you would want to make sure that you communicate it so that people have an understanding of when they're not there, why are they not there, what, what do we need to do? And my feeling is, to do this right now in peak season, and I would ask, you know, either Phil or anyone from Pelican Preserve, if just removing them or painting over them, will that cause any issues with the residents of Pelican Preserve as opposed to waiting two months for the traffic community to come back, when you've got, when you can have a strong communication plan in place? And that I don't know, because I don't know how fast information can be disseminated out to Pelican Preserve.
We've got a way of disseminating information, but I want to, I want to remind you that we have been talking about this item now for a year and a half, going on two years. And this body instructed the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee to perform a traffic report, to perform a traffic study, a professional traffic study, a year and a half ago, and they have dropped their feet for one reason or another, making one excuse after another while they don't want to have a traffic study. And we tried to low-key the thing at the time by letting them have a traffic study as opposed to telling them to remove the darned things a year and a half ago, and they still have refused to do the traffic study. I think it's high time that we made a decision, a right decision, and see what goes... see what goes on next. But I am terribly afraid that one of those 50 or 60 mile an hour truck drivers are gonna hit one of our people out there in those driving lanes, and we're gonna be in big trouble.
Do the golf carts drive on the, on the Chevron lane today?
Some do, some don't.
Can I ask a question? What, what type of liability would Pelicans Preserve be open to if a golf cart, if someone on the golf cart got hurt while driving in the Chevron? I think they're not supposed to be really legal.
I don't know the answer to that, except that liability attorneys will go after whoever has the deep pockets.
I think Phil Meesey wants to
Could I just make a comment? I had hoped that we were gonna just keep this to a very narrow question. Should we remove the chevrons, or shouldn't we remove the chevrons? The whole issue of regulation of golf carts and bicycles within the community, I think ought to await a later discussion by this board. Once we've, we've had an opportunity to do the traffic study, and admittedly, it's been delayed, and once we have an opportunity to do the traffic study and have a review by district council, then I think you're in a position to, to debate the whole question of how, where golf carts should go, where bicycles should go, the whole thing of regulating traffic within Pelican Preserve. I thought today, and that's why I tried to confine my comments to that, I thought today what we were working on was, should we take the chevrons off, or shouldn't we? And I'm saying, I think you shouldn't, until the whole thing has been settled, and I don't think you, you, as a board, have the information to settle it.
Hey, Phil, do you, how far are you along with the engagement with the traffic study?
We are going to be making, the specs for the traffic study are gonna be developed this next Tuesday, and then we will hand them to staff to, to get a tra, to get a vendor to do the traffic study. So that's where we are.
And you think it'll take two months?
I think it will probably take two months, yes. By the time we actually put out the bids, do the traffic study, and get it back, I think it's gonna take a couple of months.
But you, you need also to remind the board that you were instructed to this year
We were, I don't think it was a year and a half, but it was some time ago.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, yeah, it was, no question about it. I, I absolutely, yeah, yes, we were. But I, I don't, I, I don't think that's really relevant to the, the question at hand. And the question at hand is, should we spend whatever money it takes to take these off and then possibly put them back on? I think that's the question at hand. I think, I think you, you know, this is becoming broader than, than it should be at this point. So I'll, I'll shut up.
Yeah, I do, I have a rebuttal to, to you, Bill, but I think we've got another audience member from the P-PAC that wants to speak.
Bob Geppert from Pelican Preserve, and also a member of P-PAC. The, I'd like to clarify one thing, at least from my frame of mind. At the time that P-PAC voted to put the Chevron in, it was never an attempt to bypass anybody. We just honestly didn't think anybody else cared. It was just one of those many things that comes up. It was an idea to put the chevrons in, seemed like a good idea. So, but I hear now that it's quote-unquote "illegal," and I don't know if that's illegal is correct, but it was certainly without the total invi, involvement that we now have. Secondly, after two years with this, and I've been living there 12 years, I agree with Phil, I just don't think there's a rush to judgment, to remove them, because it's very likely they'll go right back.
That's not true.
Okay, okay, I don't
It is not very likely they don't go right
Well, I don't know, until we get the traffic study, Bill. I mean, you may not approve it, the board, but if P-PAC approves the traffic study, then it'll go either way, whatever they recommend is what we're gonna do. We're not gonna fight it, we're not gonna try and influence. We want to pay an expert to tell us. So anyway, that's just my nickels worth.
I have one last question, and that is, if we remove the chevrons, does that then allow that lane to be used by both bicycles and golf carts? And, and with no issues?
Well, the no issues qualifier, I don't think that ever applies.
If you remove the quote "with no issues," the answer is yes. The bicycles can go drive wherever they feel
Correct.
Wherever they feel comfortable and safe, and, and the golf cart drivers can too. Yes, sir?
Okay. Now, when I was talking before, you, you interrupted me, but this time, hopefully, you won't do that.
Then don't try and tell me what I'm gonna say.
In any case. What Bill just repeated is the fact that instead of now, if you think about some logic, now we have bikes that are probably the most vulnerable to injury in the three categories of motorized vehicles being two of the categories, golf carts, cars, trucks, and the third being bicycles. No cage, no surrounding, et cetera. And what Bill stated, and it's there on record, is that by doing this, now bikes can go out and have to fight through the traffic of the, as he said, this great amount of trucks, cars, et cetera, that are speeding. Now the idea is to put the bikes into that type of situation.
That's not true.
Wait a while, I didn't interrupt you, don't be so rude as to interrupt me.
Why don't you stick to the truth, you wouldn't be interrupting.
Therefore, the idea of the golf carts being in that particular lane just is, there is no logic to what was stated whatsoever. Again, to be able to have, instead of impassioned minds making statements like this, but instead, true professionals making it by that report that's to be done, and also the other statements were the fact of, you put those chevrons there and you didn't have the right to, therefore you should be punished. No, that's not our position.
And for me, it's just really simple. It's, should we approve to remove the chevrons today, or does it make sense to wait two months until the traffic study's done? That's what it boils down for me. And now, I'm honestly, I'm on the fence, because I cannot, I can't decide if it makes more sense to just remove them now, or wait two months till there's, you know, maybe some type of resolution or a plan. I don't know if, if painting chevrons again would be a decision or not. And honestly, I'd leave it up to the traffic study to determine how that lane is gonna be used, and that's not why we're here today. I'm just on the fence of whether we do it, we approve it today, or we wait two months until the traffic study, and I'm literally on the fence with that.
Then let me then make the motion that, I'm gonna make the motion that we table this for a period of two months. Pressure's on.
Is there a motion on the table?
Not yet.
No. That this be tabled for a period of two months. And at that point in time, if that study isn't there, and there isn't some great storm that came in, or something that, that precludes getting that completed, then move in that direction. But right now, that's my motion.
Is that a motion to table?
Pardon?
Is that a motion to table this item?
For a period of two months.
Okay, I have a motion to table, is there a second to the motion to table?
I'd like, April wanted to say something, and I wanted to
No, wait a minute, no, 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 we're, we're beyond that. We've had a motion to table, we have to move on it if I, if we get a second. I'm hearing no second.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion and a second to table this item for two months. Motion to table is a preferential motion, has to be voted on without any further debate. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion to table failed, two to three.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Hey, Pam, I think, I think Mark and Wendy's
Okay.
Before we have any more motions, let's get, anyone else wants to talk?
I think April had something she wanted to bring to our attention, and I would like to hear that.
I just wanted to give something else for you guys to consider. I know this is, this is an important decision that we've been deliberating on for some time. But sometimes, I see it two different ways. We have, we have an issue of how the streets should be marked for safety. And then we have an issue that you're a governmental entity, you five ladies and gentlemen are the governing authority of this district, and that we have processes on which, on how information is conveyed to you, and who approves it. And that process did not happen according to how it was supposed to happen. So, you can make a decision today, based on information you don't have, which would be the study, and which, what they're suggesting to bring forward to you. Or you can make your decision based on information that you have today. And the information that you have today is that they were painted on, on the roadway without approval, and that we have no justification, we have no standing justification at this point in time to have the bicycle chevrons on the roadway. So based on that, you just might take that into consideration, and let the process fall as it should, and base your decision today on the information you have today, and let the process work, and let the P-PAC come back with the study, and let it flow. Because really, we're just talking about 500, 600, 60 bucks, whatever, that's, that's the max. So for all of the time that we're deliberating over it, I just wanted you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to be considered?
Yeah, that we table it for two months.
That's failed.
Okay, two months and one day.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and remove the chevrons on the advice of our staff.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to remove the chevrons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm looking for hands, I'm looking
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Opposed? One. Doug, I'm not getting, I'm reading the vote.
Yeah, but we've got a three, I mean, I'll, I'll oppose.
And I, I'd like to say that I really understand this, this is an emotional situation, and it is $500. But I'd like to say to the P-PAC, you know, that we had been waiting for a traffic study for some time. And it would be nice to have that, so that we could make an adequate decision. So I, and I think that this is really the best way to go, until we can get that study and move forward in a, in a legal way.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, we have a vote, three to two, in favor of moving on the chevrons. Next item up is contract for conservation area maintenance ponds and groundwater. April, I believe that you've put this item in front of us, did you not?
Yes, sorry, I did. April White, your operations manager. I think at the last board meeting, we brought the Pelican contract for pond maintenance, and now this is the gateway side for pond maintenance and the conservation areas. And we had went through the qualifying process, we ran them together, and we provided that information to you, and I believe it's been provided again. And the information that we got back, one of, one of the things I wanted to clarify on here, that a concern that staff had, was that the conservation was a fairly low bid. And so we did do some due diligence, we reached out and spoke to the contractor, and there's no reason to, to justify that as, as an irresponsible bid, or just exceptionally low. So, you know, hopefully, we have implemented the, the scoring system as far as performance, and staff will monitor that closely, as far as those conservation areas, because that bid was so low.
Is that the reason that the statement on page 41, could you put 41 up on the screen for everybody? Is that an explanation of the paragraph that says Tetra Tech supports the awarding, but because staff concerns regarding low bid, is that, is that how they
Yes, and then our conversations, we, we tried to kind of back into, well, you know, what, what is a per acre type of, of fee? And we couldn't really conclude that information, and so we're relying on, on that contractor, and he feels that he can, he can meet the performance standards for that amount, and, and that's what we're recommending.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second?
So
Conversation? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
So, I'm sorry, so we're approving to go with the lake and wetland management to replace aquagenics, is that
Well, that's for the, they're two separate. It's for aquagenics for the lakes, and lake and wetland management for the conservation areas.
Yes, but, but aquagenics is currently doing the conservation areas, and so, yes, lakes, lake and wetland management would be replacing aquagenics on the conservation area side.
So having two separate vendors for that, does that not cause any oversight or accountability?
Elle actually likes it. She, she thinks that there's some benefits to be had there, by having both of them working as, it's, you know, one's on, one's on land and one's
At sea.
At sea. But Elle and I discussed that, and they have had that before, where there's two different contractors, and she definitely believes there's actually some benefits to that.
And Tetra Tech, you, you back this recommendation?
One little comment, I'll say.
You gotta
We have the same situation, Pelican, two different providers. But what I was gonna say with not commenting on this, I would appreciate if we could put in here what it is gateway. For Pelican, a lot of times we do, but sometimes we don't, and I get all nervous because I've been, I wasn't speaking about
So we should just note when it's Pelican?
And it's, well, one or the other.
No, because if it's in here, it's, it's gonna be defaulted to, to gateway. If it's Pelican, we'll call out when it's Pelican. No, that's what we should do. I mean, we, I don't think we have to state when it's gateway, I think we need to state if it's Pelican. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So for the record, my name is Tyler Weiner, and I'm with Tetra Tech. So, basically, all we were trying to say with this was, I, I don't know how much it costs to maintain a wetland, so I don't, I didn't think that we were the appropriate party to make the recommendation to say it's an appropriate bid or not. I think that Gateway staff, and Elle specifically, had a lot more knowledge on it, so we kind of just relied on what she thought about it. Okay, that's, that's fine.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yep.
Okay, now, I, I thought I had a motion left.
I think you had a motion and a second.
And I do have a second now.
A motion and a second.
Margaret, a second.
Yeah.
Any further conversation?
No.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five zero, Mr. Manager, thank you very much. Item six A. There's a resolution. Hello?
Five D, first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm down with you.
Capital Projects
Five, five D. Capital Projects update.
Five D, Capital Projects update. Thank you very much. This doesn't match, and that's my, that's my Thanks, Stephen, please proceed.
Again, Stephen Blum, Severn Trent. Let me begin kind of with the end in mind. This is a update on your capital projects. Not really looking for any action at this meeting. Based on the questions and comments that we, we go through here, we'll, we'll decide whether or not the, the board wants to make any changes to their budget and include these projects. Basically, what we have done is we have gone through each of the projects that are still open, and they start on page three of the, the package, and I do have some extra copies up here. And we have looked at each project that's in the general fund and the enterprise fund. Now, kind of as a recap, you have separate funds set up for your capital projects. Similar to a checking account, you put money into these funds, and then based on your budget and what's approved by the board, you spend down on the money that's in those projects. If any projects are still pending at year-end, and there's more spending that needs to be done, we need to bring it back in front of the board and get that additional spending approved. So what we wanted to do was to show you the projects, show you how much has been spent to date. We also track any projects, any money that has already been committed through signed contracts. And then the fourth column there that says remaining amount planned, that is the amount that staff has looked at, and again, these are estimates, has decided that they would like to carry forward, if the board approves it, that money to be spent and, and included with the 2017 projects. So what, what we did here is, and again, on page three and four, we went through everything that's in the general fund, and everything that is in the enterprise fund. And we put in what additional money needs to be spent, or would like to be spent, based on the different projects. Now, the first page, what we wanted to do was show you, if you do approve this additional spending, what is that gonna do to your reserves? What is that gonna do to your actual cash that's left over in each of those funds? So what I did there is I, I have graded out the remaining committed money. And for example, for the general fund, it's 286,000 dollars. And then two rows down, that's that's graded out is what would be expected or hoped for to get approval to spend, which would be an additional 283, you know, roughly rounding $1,000. If the board were to approve that, and again, I'm just, this is just the general fund, at the end of '16, the new projected ending balance would be about $879,000. So that, you know, would be your number that gets rolled forward into 2017. And, you know, so forth for each of the funds. In particular, the enterprise fund has another about $289,000. Now, the next page, what I also wanted to provide during this review was to see, okay, if the board were to approve this additional spending, based on what's in your current budget for '17, and that last row should say fiscal year '17 projected in balance, well, then what's going to happen now at the end of '17 based on what you already have budgeted? So you can see there, you already have about 500,000 that's budgeted for 2017. If everything gets approved, and again, this assumes everything is spent and approved, at the end of 2017, your number would be a little bit over a half a million dollars in the general fund. There's a lot of assumptions in there. It doesn't automatically approve every contract. This is just kind of looking at a top level as where your reserves will look like based on the projects that are, have already been included in your budget, either in, in '16 or '17, and what is still pending. So the idea was to kind of present this, you know, kind of go through any questions, get any comments, and then if the board is willing to accept this, at the next meeting we would provide a resolution to document that.
Questions for you? For the, so let's say, for example, the vehicle pickup truck, it's 2582 is what is to be rolled over?
That would be rolled over and then there's an additional amount in the enterprise fund. Vehicles usually get split between the two funds, so there's also about 6,000 in the enterprise funds, so two.
April, you know, what is that for?
Are you talking about the vehicle pickup, that specific amount?
Yeah. Is it earmarked for something specific or...
Steve and I had some brief correspondence and emails and so the strategy to this was we ended up utilizing, pulling it all, all of the remaining balances for two reasons. There's a current project going on right now that at the next board meeting, we will bring to you the next phase and that was the pipe cleaning that I know has been very important to the community, but it is not appropriately budgeted for. That was something that we started at the end of last year and a part of a bigger plan that at that point in time I didn't know existed. So it wasn't in the budget appropriately. So I wanted to allow as much as possible for that moving forward to the next phase. Also, Chris and I haven't appropriately discussed it yet, but I'm very concerned about the use of the gators.
The use of...
The gator vehicles that we use in the neighborhood. I definitely think that it is appropriate for the ponds and maneuvering around our easements and that type of stuff, but also utilities is using them to, and Parks and Rec is using them just to get about to our facilities and going up to meters and such. And I'm getting very concerned about the level of traffic on our roads and just the, reading the Lee County Sheriff Office reports when they come back and the amount of speeding citations that, that they're making and just having our staff running those gators, which are not licensed vehicles on the roadways.
So, so to answer the question, you're, yes, there is some, there's a purpose for it.
Yes.
Maybe it's a new vehicle in the future or something along those lines.
Yes, I think there's...
And I guess I should ask more broadly. All these carryover items, are they specifically earmarked for specific carryover items that we just didn't get to this year? Or is it, if it's just leftover money, you know, that's, that's a different conversation?
It's, it's a mixture.
Okay.
And I do want to make the point that this is not an all or nothing type of a deal, nor is this the only time you can do this. I wanted to present this just kind of keep, keep the projects in the front of our mind, but you can approve some of it, you can approve none of it, you can table it, you can come back in a couple of months and revisit it. You know, just, you have a lot of options. We keep tracking these reports. We include it in the financials. So it, it's just one of those tasks that we like to take up at this time in the fiscal year so that if, if staff needs the money or if there's some projects that need to be planned, we want to make everybody aware of.
You good?
Yep.
I'm good.
Do you, this is just an update.
This is just an update at this point. You know, with the board's permission, we will bring this back at the next meeting. You'll also have your first set of financials, which will show you your full budget and we can have both of them together. We can have another discussion and we can just keep having discussions until we're ready to approve this.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're ready for the unique five E one where we are going to ask for a motion to remove from the table considerations for accepting the fourth amended engineer's report for Pelican Preserve Series 2003 project. May I have a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, if we may, I think, is David Lapita's on the phone, April?
Oh, we need to dial him.
Yeah.
Oh, he's here. And also I think David Caldwell arrived about an hour or so, about 40 minutes ago and I think David signed up to speak on this item. David?
Yes, he did.
Okay. And, and so I just want to make sure the board, the item is for discussion that's now removed from the table, is the board's consideration of accepting the fourth amended engineer's report for the Pelican Preserve Series 2003 Project 2013 Special Assessment Revenue Refunding Bond with report dated November 16th, 2016, as revised through today and the adoption of a resolution accepting the report. And I believe copy has been provided to all board members and I believe Mr. Caldwell has provided a copy this afternoon of the, for the revised version. And so I think Danny would want to introduce the topic and describe what revisions were made between this document and the one from last time and any communications that you may have had with Mr. Caldwell or WCI.
Absolutely. For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech District Engineer. At the last meeting, as Tony's indicated, this item was tabled and it was tabled to do a little more research. Mr. Caldwell at the last meeting had expressed concern that $600,000 worth of requisition items were removed. We since went back, looked at the items that are remaining and I've had discussions with Mr. Caldwell and looked at those items and we went, Tetra Tech went and costed those items out. And, and part of the discussion with Mr. Caldwell was for him to do his research on what the actual true costs were. So this morning, Mr. Caldwell provided those costs and that's what you actually see reflected in this report. So this has been a, a lot of work has been done on this and a lot of conversations, a lot of communication with, with staff and with WCI. So what you see on table five on page seven, that's essentially what has been revised. And so not all of that 600,000 has been placed back in, but a portion of that has and that's based on the information provided by Mr. Caldwell. So...
Danny, if you can go in great detail as to what table five reflects as well as the notes and then the narratives thereafter.
Okay, yeah, the table five, I'll go column by column and the first two columns actually drainage, repairs and aeration. Those are the components that we, the purpose of this amended report and the purpose of the previous amended report was to take advantage of funds that otherwise might be refunded that we could use for part of that original project, the 2003 project. So columns, well, the first two columns, drainage, repairs and aeration are essentially the balance of what funds would be remaining less what would be requisitioned otherwise. The column Villa Capri Phase Two, that is the work in the Palazzo area past the cul-de-sac. Previously, there was an item in there for roadway work and I think it was in the neighborhood of about $202,000. That item was removed because the road is private and all parking is private, so that cannot be requisitioned. It's not included as, as part of this. So that was removed. There was also an item in there for landscaping under Villa Capri Phase Two and the discussion with Mr. Caldwell was that would not be requisitioned and that work was done over 10 years ago and I would imagine that landscaping's probably been replaced a couple of times. Yes, sir?
So that being said, does that mean also the stormwater management system associated with Palazzo is the responsibility of Palazzo?
No. Yes and no. What, the work that is in here, the $235,166, that is a portion that is gateways. So that the, the yes part to Palazzo is there is road drainage that will remain private. So this is essentially that major conveyance from the roadway to the flowway in, in that case. Plus, there were two pipes that were west of the cul-de-sac but that were not, so they're not in that Palazzo area, but they weren't previously requisitioned.
They connect to water by, two ponds?
Yes, yes. They connect to, to bodies of, of water that are not in the Palazzo area. They're actually in the Villa Capri Phase One area, but they were not requisitioned as part of the Villa Capri Phase One. So instead they're, they're in this Villa Capri Phase Two. So what Tetra Tech did was we went by the design plans and added up the quantities. We actually used the dollars from WCI for today's dollars for Prado and Materita and we applied those costs and then used present worth analysis to back it to, to 10 years ago when the infrastructure was placed until Mr. Caldwell provided this information. And it was pretty close. It was within a few thousand dollars. So we used Mr. Caldwell's numbers on that.
So the second part of my question is, is so if a defect occurred in that section that's there, whose responsibility is it?
We have actually gone through the inspections that were completed and the videos that were completed and any work and that's been taken into consideration already as part of this.
Are you saying current city interest?
Well, we've video, we've...
Well, it's twofold.
Yeah, I mean, it, it has been videoed, so we know what, and this, this area, the pipe was in, in pretty good shape. There was some, some silting that was, that was removed and in the main, the largest of the pipes, which is a 48-inch pipe, there was actually a section of a tree that was, you know, left in there.
Brings back memory.
Yeah, so. Now with that, and, and you'll see on there the adjustment for depreciation. This work was done, as we said, 10 years ago and, you know, I don't know what Mr. Caldwell is going to speak about. He hasn't commented on that item, but we felt it was appropriate since that work was done 10 years ago. It'd be like asking you to pay, you know, today's dollar for a car that's 10 years old. So that work, you know, is, there is a life on these pipes and, you know, going by industry standard, that's about 40 years. So just using a straight line depreciation, 10 years, so this is, that 56, 58,000 represents a 25% depreciation. So we're recommending that.
So there is a liability for the Gateway CDD?
In terms of, well...
We've not acquired that yet.
Right, right.
But it's no different than the liability of other places. Except the road is not a part of the Gateway CDD.
But the pipes, the pipeline issue is basically a northeast to southwest pipe that traverses under the roadway. There's two pipes.
Well, the portion that is under the roadway is within gateway side of the roadway. The portion that is in the Palazzo area ends at the, at the right away, best I can tell from that, so.
Doesn't that seem like a funny marriage? Does, am I the only one that's seeing the...
We have similar circumstances in Sienna, Ravenna, Town Center, and the Gorges.
Okay.
It's funny, but it's not unique.
Now, right, I mean, you, there's also some pipe that's connected presently where, that was installed for future development that is connected and it's draining to nothing. So there, that is part of the silting problem is, and, you know, if we wanted to be proactive on that, we might suggest cutting that pipe off until those Palazzo condos are done. But I'm not going to go as far as that for the purpose of this, of this report. So...
Really?
One last comment here. I don't know if I told you, copies of all the videotapes and the written narrative that's been given to Palazzo board and they are moving forward on their own and wherever it is, we're going to go.
All right.
So moving on, the next column is the tract E model area. Again, that, that work was done recently, within the last three years. So those costs are directly what the, the costs were for the work that's been performed. Work that is remaining, so the only work that is remaining on, on this project outside of the drainage and aeration work that we're including as part of this is the next to last column, which is the Pelican Preserve Boulevard within the Villa Capri Phase One area, which is basically from Valentina Court to the end of Gateway Boulevard, which is the roundabout.
Palazzo Boulevard.
Sorry, Pelican Preserve Boulevard to the roundabout and the, the newest T on the model tract, tract D model home area. So that work totals, and we think it's on the high side conservatively, is $57,000 and that's what we've estimated. And we've added a contingency in there for that. So we don't believe that'll cost that much. But that is work that we're suggesting that Gateway do that, so WCI would not be involved with that or, or requisition for that work. So we would do it when we felt, when Gateway felt it was appropriate to do that final lift. So that basically gets us to, to where we are with the modifications that we've, that we've made. And again, this is based on the input from WCI.
Would you stand aside for a moment while I ask if number one, David Caldwell, wants to comment on this item?
David Caldwell, WCI, for the record. I had to speak. I kept, my name kept coming up. I just wanted to confirm that Danny and I did converse. The numbers you see in this latest report for Villa Capri and tract E are figures that I did furnish to Danny. So that's a confirmation. I understand the depreciation issue. I'm not pleased with it, but I understand it. So I appreciate the district's efforts to accommodate our initial concerns. It's appreciated.
Questions for David?
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, thank you very much.
And since I may not get another chance, I just appreciate Ms. Gill and Mr. Newbauer's service here on the district and I'm sure you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Mr. Tickle, did you want to comment on this item now that you understand it totally?
That was an assumption. Just one question. Is this going to come up starting December the first again or is this decision done?
If, if the board were to...
Because if it is, I'll ask it to be waived.
Accept the, this revised fourth amended engineer's report and adopt the resolution accepting it, this will not be discussed unless the board wishes to discuss it again on December 1st.
Okay, because I, I don't know about Kathleen, but I know about what you're talking about as much as nothing. And I just don't want it to come back, because if it does, I would ask to defer it.
I'm, I believe that I'm obligated to ask if there are any other members...
Absolutely, yes, sir.
...of the audience that wish to comment on this item. If you do, now is the time. I was sure that Mr. Gebhardt would have something more to say. We have a possible... Danny, would you please return to the podium for one moment?
Yes, sir.
When I look at all these numbers, which I've just seen for the final time a few minutes ago.
Hopefully.
I was, I had some conversation with Mr. Gebhardt a week ago and we were thinking that there was a, what was it? $1,099,000 would be available to you. Is that, do I recall correctly? Uh, nine ninety-nine. Nine ninety-nine, okay. And have you calculated what it's going to be with these in this final report?
It's...
It's close.
Nine eighty-five, right? Eighty-six is the damage approximately.
Oh, my leg went to sleep. Okay, we calculated that we are going to need about 1.16, 1,161,000 to do what we want to do with downspouts and gutters to protect the erosion.
And the, and the aeration is a big part of it.
Well, we already got, yeah, aeration is what we already, yes, and we have that covered too. So therefore, this is going to provide 986,000 towards that goal. It isn't enough to do everything we want to do, but we, in our budgeting process, are allocating money every year for these things, and we're very happy with where we are.
I'm delighted to hear you say that.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Are there any other folks in the audience who want to comment on this item? Yes, yes. Mr. Attorney, do you wish to have the bond counsel, David Lepidus?
Lepidas, I think that would be appropriate, yes.
Mr. Bond Counsel, Mr. Lepidus?
Lepidas.
Lepidas, thank you. Would you care to comment here?
The only comment that I have is, is that I think that somebody made a comment a moment ago about would this come back to the board, when these last improvements that are part of the, of the engineers report, the aeration and the other items that are described at the end of the report, when they are complete, this will come back and so that the 2003/2013 project can be accepted and the books closed down on that. That will, that will come back to the board when it's done.
That'll be supposedly many months from now.
Yeah.
And at that point, that resolution will indicate how much money, if any, should be returned to the bond account. Is that so?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If there's unspent money at that time, there would be a bond redemption. Probably wouldn't be very big.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Tony, do you have anything?
Nothing further. I think it's appropriate if the board wishes to, if someone make a motion to adopt the fourth amended engineers report for the Pelican Preserve Series 2003 Project, 2013 Special Assessment Revenue Refunding Bond, which report is dated November 16th, 2016, and also adopt a resolution accepting the report, which has been provided to you.
You'd make a great chairman.
Oh, because I'm reading from my script.
I have a motion to accept what our attorney has just suggested.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. That was Gary and Pam.
Gary and Pam.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, five zero, Mr. Manessus.
Thank you all.
Before anybody leaves, I want to give a special thanks to the folks with Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, especially Nancy Hall, but not exclusively, to Dan and Tony and David Caldwell from WCI, who worked their head off to get this thing to us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe that we're down to half reports District Council.
Yes, briefly, the update on Daniel's preserve is that I've been going back to my files to get a better handle on all the various permits, because there are multiple names for that particular area, and Scott Connell of Worthington, who's acting as a consultant to Worthington now, has been doing the same. I'm meeting with Scott next Monday, so we can finalize a memorandum to the board to try to wrap up a recommendation to the board at its next meeting.
Thank you.
Hey, Tony, did you ever get a, did you ever get a plotback from Grant around?
Oh, Mr. Ellie? No. Other than, he's still looking at, with the traffic agreement?
The inquiry that Tetra Tech had around, on 82.
I've had no response from Mr. Ellie, no affirmative response, other than, please send me, please put in writing what you want to know, and I did, and I've heard nothing back. And as to the traffic control agreement, they asked me to redline it. I did that and sent it to them, and I've had no comment back.
Okay.
I will follow up against, like, every one or two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
On that note, I don't think it would hurt if the chairman or someone else would contact the mayor and say, we have all these inquiries, and again, Grant is usually pretty responsive, but I don't know what else is going on.
Yeah.
Let me just put it that way. I'll just-
Would the board like for me to contact the mayor of Fort Myers, see if we can put a little pressure on him?
Move these along to get responses, at least on these two queries.
I may bump into Grant tonight.
Okay.
I didn't hear an answer to my question. Do you want to get ahold of Randy Henderson, the mayor of Fort Myers?
I think if, no, I think if Doug speaks to Grant.
Yeah, let me-
Whether you speak to him before I do, go ahead, that'll move things.
That's a fair approach.
Okay, that's great. I love it. Anything else?
No, sir, no. Margaret just mentioned the name of an individual. It's probably indicating what Grant should be doing in this instance. Did I say that politely enough?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang up now. Okay.
And David, thank you very kindly for all your assistance, and also, David, good news, he's been having some medical issues, but he's been doing much better lately, so it's greatly appreciated, his timeliness and his responsiveness on this matter. Hey, David, be well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And have a good holiday next week, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, are you going to talk us through this resolution?
Yeah, just briefly, this is a resolution that's part of the pack that's needed to submit to, and if I make a mistake, Tyler or Danny will correct me, to the state with regards to the SRF loan. It's just a resolution indicating that the board will pledge certain assessments for the repayment. It's a, it's utilizing a format that the state has, geared towards municipalities, but I just restructured it to apply to the district. It's been reviewed by, I think, Stephen, April, Danny, Tyler, all have agreed as to the form, and it's in good order for approval, adoption, and execution by the chair. Tyler, Danny, or anybody have any different comments? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, board, you've heard the recommendation of our attorney to adopt this resolution regarding the state involvement loan fund, which is number, da-da-da-da, 36040, S-D-Y slash D-E-S. I have a motion to approve.
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any conversation on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, five zero, Mr. Manessus. Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing further.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Engineer?
Hello again, Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. So, got a couple items on here for you guys tonight. First one is a memorandum regarding aeration. So, a couple of weeks back, we were asked to put together an estimate to include aeration into the first phase of lakes. So this is the first 13 lakes that would be included in their SRF loan. So basically what we used was the bid amounts from the recent project over Pelican Reserve. Just figured out a cost per acre of aeration, and then applied that to the lakes in the first phase that we're doing here in Greater Gateway. So, the, it's a very, it's a very early estimate. Things could definitely change depending upon a variety of conditions. Probably the biggest factor is going to be your power supply. I think if someone were to sit down and look a lot closer at where we could get that power to each lake, this estimate could probably go up or down, depending upon what they find out, but for budgetary reasons, we think it's a pretty, pretty fair number, so that's what you may expect.
So this is for 13?
Yes, sir.
There are two lines. You have to go back and read across. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I tried to stick it all on one page, so there's two columns there. Sorry about that.
Mr. Tickle would like to make a comment on this if the board approves. Thank you.
Just one question is, does this include non-construction costs?
Non-construction costs, this does not include design or inspection, no. This is just-
It could be up 15, 20% easily.
Yeah, these are, yes, Mr. Tickle's point, this is for the construction portion of the estimate. This does not include design or inspection services. I think inspection on the aeration project would be pretty minimal personally, but it doesn't include design.
So this should get to 500,000, what I have tried.
It's possible.
Pepper, do you honestly think, Tyler, that $80,000 is, that's the number billed just throughout, you know, which is as good as any number. Do you think that that's really a reasonable amount for design?
Of this? Yes, absolutely.
Really?
Yes.
How many man-hours, person-hour, I think that's wrong, how many person-hours do you think that this is going to take?
At this point, I really don't have any idea. If you're asking that you think 80,000 is high on design side, it may be. I think it's, if you were to budget 500, it would probably definitely cover it, but as far as where you're at, it could be less. It probably would not be more.
And just so I'm clear, this is, this is additional on top of the SRS, SRF funding, correct?
That's correct.
So we got to fund this, figure out how to do it.
Yes.
Mr. Bloom, are you listening?
Yes, I am.
There is a possibility, and we've been discussing with the folks at DEP about if you did want to add on to the loan that you would be applying for. We haven't worked out the details, and we don't have an exact answer yet, but it's a possibility that you could borrow more money than what we originally had proposed.
Or make what we have work.
Yeah, exactly.
And i- is it, is it, just, is it engineers' recommendation that all 13 lakes require aeration? Yeah.
Even though there's this vast difference in acreage?
Keep in mind, these ponds were selected on the basis of their urgency and need for Lake Bank restoration, so that doesn't have anything to do with this whatsoever. It's a totally separate issue.
Well-
And the-
We've got 11 acres for Lot 60, and we've, and I'm rounding up, and we've got two acres for Lake 90.
Yeah, I think there's-
The way you cut it, that's, that's a five times difference.
I think Tyler did a good job in making the presentation, but we're awful premature on this. Couple of things that are missing. We don't have bathymetrics for these ponds first, all of them. Second thing is, we've done nothing, nothing, on taking any sediment samples and taking any chemical analysis whatsoever, so we have a lot of front, front-seat work to be done before we even start on this, but this will give you an order of magnitude. I can guarantee you, it's not going to be less than that number. It's going, I think it's going to be significantly higher. I'm really worried, we've got ponds that are 30 years old, and after the seminar that Chris and I went to down in Naples, and some of the issues that they talked about on chemicals, that they found after 30 years of treatment of algae and things that are in the bottom of these ponds, like copper sulfate, that nobody will touch with a 10-foot pole, we don't even know that we have it in these ponds. So we have a lot of homework, but I think this is a great start, that at least you are all knowing, and I'm totally in support of an amendment pushing this toward an SRF loan. I wouldn't want to do this out of cash. Make it on a 20-year financing plan.
Where are we on the bathymetrics? Because I thought that we had approved for that to be being done.
You did, I believe, but only for a certain number of lakes. We have data for, I want to say six or seven of these lakes. I don't remember the exact number, six, but I don't think we ever moved forward with the remainder.
So, my concern is, we're already in dry season, and when are we going to actually start work? My, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a start date so we can finally get something accomplished on these.
Aeration is not water level.
That, that is a very good question. As far with regards to the lake banks, that's two memos later. We will discuss that very much in detail.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the aeration's not impacted by the water level.
Right, I understand that.
Correct. Something else that my counterpart here pointed out to me that I had overlooked is that this work was not included in the facilities plan that we did for SRF, so if we were to go to SRF funding for this, we would have to do, I'm not sure if it'd be an amended or a new facilities plan.
You have to go through the whole process.
So, basically, we would have to do another facilities plan to include this type of work.
So if-
If you agree that we did the bath, we approved the bathymetrics.
But for only, what was it, six or-
Six or seven.
Did we only approve for six or seven, or that's all we've gotten to?
Well, even if we approved for six or seven, why hasn't it been done?
It has. The, I believe, I could be wrong, I believe that the board authorized CES, Community Engineering Services, or, no, I'm sorry, Community Environmental Services, to proceed with bathymetrics of, I think, six lakes, and he's completed those, and we have the results, but I don't think, again, I could be wrong, I don't think that he's been authorized to do all of these, the remainder of these.
So of the results that you have, does it show that we're nuclear, or?
I don't, I don't believe it included the chemical analysis, and I don't actually recall the results offhand, to be honest with you.
Would you step aside for a moment? Mr. Geppert wanted to address-
Yeah, Bob Geppert again, from Pelican. Our experience with the process led us to discover a couple of things. First, Gary, to your question about the size of the pond, we determined, and we had guidance from South Florida and from the university and from the Hyacinth Control, that you want to do every pond, because if you don't do a pond, you are going to kill that pond. It'll get silted eventually, and if you don't do anything on a pond in terms of aeration, you'll probably have to dredge it every 40 years. If you put the aeration, or, excuse me, every 25 years, if you put the aeration in, you will get a lifetime of 40-plus years. So that was the first thing. Cost estimate. This was the biggest problem we had. It cost as much to get electricity to the ponds and to investigate all the right easements as putting in the equipment. So when you're looking at your aeration cost and the design and everything else, you're going to spend as much getting power to the side of the pond as you will anything else you're doing. And Ed is dead right, this is an uphill battle, and then you got the residents to fight because nobody likes the noise and all that other stuff. So you, we have a lot of money in upfront costs. We use CES also, Community Environmental Services. For us, we did both bathymetrics and coring, but we didn't analyze the samplings because our ponds are pretty fresh, but we at least knew the level of silt, and we want to see if that improves over time. So we have a baseline.
So then, is there anything that we need to be doing with the cooperation of WCI or in conjunction with WCI for the upcoming things that are in the areas under construction in Pelican Preserve, Hampton Park, that'll enhance?
In Pelican Preserve, about 2013, we went to, before we started all the new construction, and told them we, odds would pay for electric at Lake Side, and they took it upon themselves, and they provided it free.
Excellent.
We never got a bill. So everything, well Cypress, for even beyond after the first four or five, we have power at no cost, and that's going to drive our costs down significantly in the future.
How about Hampton Park, David?
I think we're doing it the old-
Same thing?
I think that it does require-
I was going to say, the reason they did that was because it's required by the permit criteria manual.
Oh, so we got permit manual.
Oh, my God.
You put the name on the books, because now it's in the books for prior aeration.
Yes, sir, so all, so-
I'll give an ad lib.
So, you're talking about the areas over in Prado, they, they are putting aeration on all those lakes right now.
Okay, okay. Hey, Tyler, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's just say, for the sake of argument, and this is a complete hypothetical, let's say we do a really good job in this project, and we come in under budget because we've managed this project so well, with, can we allocate additional funds through, through any cost saves to things like aeration funding, or we'd have to go back and amend the?
I think that any improvement would need to be identified in the facilities plan that was approved by the DEB.
Prior to the work, or could you go back and amend the facility plan once the project gets started?
Prior.
You have to do it prior?
Yes.
Okay.
But if you do a really good job managing the project, you can move on to the next.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm just, every time this seems to come up, it started 5 million, then it was five and a half, then it's six, and then more additional money for leitorials, and then now aera, and it's just, you know, at what point are we going to say, okay, enough? I mean, this is, this is only 13 lakes.
South Florida says uncle.
Yeah, I mean, it just, price just keeps going up and up and up and up and up and up, and we haven't even, this is what, we've got, you know, projected 21, 25 million dollars to spend to do all the lakes, and, I mean, we've just got other issues. I mean, at some point, we have to get creative, and we're going to have to, you know, maybe phase things in, and I know we need to fix things, and we've neglected for a long time. I'm just stating, I have a real issue with continued, more items coming to this board around ponds and lakes. And that's it. And this is just proposal today, correct?
We're not asking for any approval. I mean, we were just asked to provide an estimate, so this is the best guess we've got, what we think it may cost at this point.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Tyler or April or someone to review and report to the board as soon as possible, our history on the bath metrics, which ponds were approved for the bath metrics, and how much it would cost to do the remainder, at least of the thirteen of our, of our, of our first go around.
And then, what else do we need? If we need chemical analysis to make assessments?
In seven, like Bob just said.
If we do those tests, and it, and it helps lead us to, in a direction where, you know, we make more educated decisions on what this plan is, I mean, we have to have that information, or else we're just throwing things around without any, any justification for it.
Can you help us on that?
Yes, sir.
But just on the thirteen?
Just on the first thirteen, yes, sir.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tyler.
I'm gonna stay put.
Oh, the Gateway Storage Facility update.
Okay, so this is an update on Gateway Storage Facility. Uh, the memo hopefully lays it out fairly clearly, but basically, here's where we're at. Um, we had a big brick wall with Lee County zoning for a little while. They initially told us that what we were planning to do wasn't an approved use, that we had to do what's called a PD amendment, which involves public hearings and a whole bunch of stuff that we really don't want to or need to get into. So anyhow, uh, to make a long story short, we were finally able to successfully convince them otherwise. So we are now moving forward with completing, um, all of the necessary items required to move forward the development order, like the environmental studies, stuff like that. Like we discussed previously, we're putting together requests to get exemptions on some requirements, which we feel fairly confident that we'll get exempted from. But we did want to discuss with the board at this point, um, kind of, uh, not necessarily specific items and what your budget is, but kind of just what level of service that, uh, the board is expecting out of this facility. And what I mean by that is, um, you know, are we, are we expecting the whole site to be, you know, paved parking area, or some, excuse me, a little more economical, like, uh, you know, maybe some shell access, or just, you know, some base rock, or just grass parking? Um, you know, are we expecting security fences, twenty-four-hour lighting, stuff like that? Just kind of get a feel of what, uh, we're looking for so we can kind of make our design a little bit more accurate. So that's the kind of discussion we'd like to have with you today.
Well, when, well, I'll go first.
Paved parking.
What did you say?
Paved. Unless you want to slog your RV through the mud and all that stuff.
Yeah, I was thinking about how, I was thinking rain, um...
Then what do we have to do with stormwater management? If we do pavement, then you've got square footage and stormwater and runoff, and what do we do?
I mean, you're gonna address stormwater regardless really of what you do, because we're gonna change the existing topography of the site anyhow, so you're gonna add some sort of impervious. So I'm really not so concerned about, um, the impervious. I mean, if you're talking about paving the entire site, that's a little bit different than what I think we have in mind. Um...
What did you have in mind?
Well, uh, let me, let me hand April something to put on the screen.
Well, we, we earmarked, or at least the original estimates were around a hundred K. I think it was ninety-eight or something. Is that, is that accurate? Around a hundred K is what we originally said it would cost? So tell us what we get for that.
Well, uh, so let me take a couple ideas around here.
I'm sure there's a reason why you're gonna...
There's, so it, it's a big site. I mean, we're talking about a hundred-plus spots, depending upon how big those spots are gonna be. Uh, I don't know if you want to go ahead and build a hundred spots today. You know, maybe you want to do half and wait till, like, you rent it out and then do the other half. That's an option to consider. Um, if you, if you did that, you know, obviously you could do a lot more paving, do a lot, you know, fencing, lighting, a lot more for the first phase, and then, you know, if you were successful in renting all those, maybe go do the second phase of it. You know, that's a possibility to consider.
Yeah, and I would much rather go and build out a hundred, a hundred plots.
Say again?
I would, I would be willing, I would, if it was me, I would build out a hundred plots. I'd even sacrifice paving for, you know, uh, you know, gravel or, or, you know, possibly something, if, if dollars became, became an issue. Because that, then you're talking about revenue versus expenditure.
What, what is the, the percentage of paved versus non-paved out here now? Are, are most people on non-paved spaces?
Um, I, I would say most of them are not paid out here.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Well, all your storage facilities are paved. I mean, your commercial spaces are paved.
Yeah, I mean, I would say most, you know, commercial storage facilities you would go to, most of them have paved parking lots. Not necessarily saying you have to. I mean, there's a lot of options here. You could pave, so this little conceptual figure here, there's a main pathway, I guess, um, throughout the inside there that goes around the long spaces. Um, you know, one option is you could just pave that and do gravel parking for the spots. It's an option. Um, you could do gravel the whole way, and you could do something like a shell treatment. Uh, we just did a parking lot out on Fort Mars Beach. There's actually pictures of it in there.
I guess what you're asking us for is direction, but I, I, you know, to Gary's point, I mean, I would love to have it paved, if, if, that's what we could do. But I think until you say, for a hundred thousand dollars, this is what you get, for a hundred fifty thousand, you get this, or for seventy thousand, you get that. I mean, there is, there is an ROI here, and we've calculated that on our, per plot, and what, you know, how long we think it, it would take for us to, I think we said maybe two years to, to pay off.
That's actually my driveway.
Showing off his truck.
So, um, so to clarify here, I don't think you're gonna pave the whole thing for a hundred grand. I don't. I don't think you're gonna get the entire pathway and all the spots paved for a hundred grand. I, I don't think that's gonna be a possibility there. Um, you know, we can, we can look into doing cost analysis of how much we think you could pave, if that's the big concern, is pavement versus non-pavement.
But you're gonna have to fence the whole area regardless of how many spots you've paved, right?
Yes, sir. You will definitely have to. I would recommend fencing the whole area. So pavement versus non-pavement is one question, and there's a considerable cost increase if you want to pave the entire thing. I mean, I would say you're probably looking at, um, you know, twice as much as non-pavement, three times as much as non-pavement. Um, the other question is, how much security do you want to provide? Are we talking about just fencing? Or are we talking about, um, you know, you want to do gate access cards? Uh, right now, you just got a padlock out here. So are we talking about, you know, access cards similar to how you do dog park and the pool and things like that? Is that something that...
Or a punch code or something. Yeah. We don't want a combination lock on...
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, so there's that, and then the other one, big dollar-wise, is lighting. Uh, do, do you want to have it lit?
What's the possibility of doing solar lighting now?
Um, it's a possibility. There's, uh, you know, there's some long-term cost savings probably in there. Um, we could do an analysis and take a look at it if you'd like. The capital cost would probably be the same, or maybe even a little bit higher than, uh, just doing traditional lighting, but we can look into it.
Keep in mind, my projection is, uh, if you, if we have all a hundred slots, and let's say it's just at eighty bucks a month, which is a little bit of an increase, I think we're maybe at sixty now, somewhere around there. That's a, that's a gross revenue of ninety-six thousand a year. So keep that in mind as far as what we're willing to invest, uh, in return to when it would pay for itself. So a hundred slots, and I, we're at fifty, what are we at now?
Well, right, right now, as far as that analysis, you know, once we get to the point of coming back for approval, we'll actually do a pre-forma, because one of the things that we have done so far is, uh, we, we did like an industry comparison, and right now, our fee schedule isn't quite right. We're doing, we're doing it per foot on the vehicle, unit itself, and I think, uh, the industry is on a per foot of the acreage that you're, that you're paying.
Yeah.
Paying, that you're renting. Um, and so I think...
You're paying for the plot.
Yeah, so I think that there's some, um, increases just in the fee schedule itself that is going to help, uh, that ROI.
But my point is, per plot, on an average of eighty a month, will get us about ninety-six K annually. So in the first year, we could pay for it, if we stayed within that, uh, that dollar amount. So if we wanted to, you know, pave it, whatever, in fact, goes up to a hundred fifty, or if we double it, it's two hundred K. It would be paid for in the first two years. It, well, you know, an estimate, but I think it's pretty realistic on that. So just keep that in mind. But I would like to get some, you know, uh...
Doug, it's gonna be paid for if we stay with a hundred K to build this in.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it's, if we double that, it would take us two years to pay off. I'm, I'm just trying to get you a call, from a cost-revenue perspective, in making a decision what we want to spend, you have to look at when we can recover that expenses back, and what time do we become profitable. In this, you know, with my estimates, you know, if we stay within a hundred K, we could become profitable after year two, barring, you know, eighty is where we're at, and we rent all a hundred out, which indications say, uh, that we would probably come pretty close to full capacity, you know, probably the first six months, uh, post, uh...
You think there are a hundred folks that want to put their vehicles?
I do, yeah.
I mean...
There's a waiting list today of probably, how many, you got on the waiting list?
I think there's fifty.
Fifty, and...
Close to fifty.
Yeah, so if we open up tomorrow, we would be at capacity, day one.
If we don't charge any more than we're charging now, you may be right, but if we have to increase, if we increase...
If we increase twenty dollars a month from sixty to eighty, which is where we're at now, that's where that ninety-six K comes in. And most storage facilities are a hundred dollars a month for, for storage. So, but I wanted to, I don't want to get away from what you're here for, is some direction. Uh, I'd say, can you give us some options?
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, would you like for us to come back and just say, here's a gold, silver, bronze, you know? You can do this. Here's how much we think this is gonna cost, and we can just kind of go from there.
And, and unless anyone disagrees, I would say do your cost estimates on a, on a full build, on having a hundred plots.
And then you scale it down.
And then, and maybe if you do a partial pave or something like that. But I want full build out with a hundred slots being available. Yeah, um, so that's, that's the only requirement that I would have.
That, that's right. But we gotta, we gotta fence the whole thing, and we gotta make a decision on lights.
Yeah.
And back, and it's back there in the weeds. I think lights would be a good idea if we can possibly afford them, because there are some, uh, how am I gonna use, there, there are some ne'er-do-wells.
Well, could... And can we piggyback off the existing stadium lights on the backside?
That's what we were looking at for part of it. There's two light banks out there that we can piggyback the backside of it that would be shorter for half of it.
Yeah.
The front half, we're gonna have to put in some new stuff, but that's what we're looking at, those two light banks that are out there now. So here's what we'll do. It sounds like we definitely want to do the whole thing. Don't do it in phases. Uh, paving sounds like pretty...
A paving option and an alter, and an alternative.
So we'll throw that in there, and we'll just come back with some options about, you know, what we think you could remove and what options, I guess, you consider.
And access would be something, you know, uh, either card or punch code is probably more, um...
Viable, I suppose. That each individual would have their own personal code.
And then, an à la carte item would be surveillance.
Okay.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
I've looked at this schematic that's up there more, quite a few times, and I've also looked at some of those land yachts out there, uh, and, and water yachts. Is there a, is there a way that you can design this thing so, so it's a, a, a drive-in, drive-out?
That, yes, sir, that actually is how it's set up right now.
This, this is?
Yes, sir.
So you drive in on the left?
The way this is, you know, again, this is, uh, I mean, this is kind of early on, but the way this is currently set up is you would have pull-through slots, um, all the way around. You'd have four lanes, you know, again, we're probably, for budgetary reasons, gonna cut it back to two lanes, and the outside lane's probably gonna be water conveyance. But, um, right now, you've got fifty, fifteen by sixty pull-throughs that would, you know, probably be for your large, um, you know, motorhomes, things like that. And then the, uh...
You don't want to be backing up.
No, sir. These, these are all pull-throughs that are right now. Um, you know, we may shorten those and extend the other spots. The other spots right now are set up as fifteen by twenties fours. You know, your average parking stall's eight by eighteen, um, so it's a little bit larger than just your regular old parking space, but we would probably want to extend those over to something like thirty feet, so you can get, you know, a regular boat trailer, something like that in there. So that's what we're doing right now as far as changing the layout. I don't think you're gonna end up with a different number of spaces, um, but, you know, again, it's...
Some widths may be smaller and bigger.
Right.
Because you got, you want to be able to fit an RV in there. I mean, if you were to walk outside here or take a tour of any storage facility, you'll be able to get an eye, a good idea of, because I think we're gonna get a good portion of commercial, and, you know, a lot of trailers like we have out here, um, boats and RVs, uh, that's pretty much what it's for. So, okay.
Are you satisfied with the conversation?
Yes, sir. I think we hit the important parts enough for us to come back and give you a couple of options, so I think we're good.
Good. Uh, who's gonna do the lake bank restoration program update?
I will, and since it's early, I'm gonna start at the beginning, if that's okay. Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. About two thousand years ago, the Clusa Indians said...
Don't go canal.
Let me fast forward a little bit. Um, okay, so you have this long-winded memo in front of you. Um, background is basically, it ties a little bit into what we were talking about with Tyler on that aeration. Um, the work that has been done, and as far as the background goes, is, um, a couple of years ago, we went through and prioritized lakes. So, uh, facilities plan was prepared for those worst, um, lakes, the first thirteen. Um, a request for inclusion was submitted to DEP for, uh, to allow the SRF, the State Revolving Fund, uh, monies to be used for this program. The next step was actually preparing the facilities plan. To include that aeration, to go back to that, we would have to amend the, uh, facilities plan. Now, one thing that we do have in here was, um, since the last meeting, we've talked amongst staff and looked at, um, an option to include the, uh, non-residential sites for, um, for restoration as well, it, where needed. And that was something that this board previously, um, only wanted to move forward with the residential side, and, and, and right now, that's how it still is. But just discussion with staff, we've included in this memo, if you wanted to do, um, the non-residential side, the golf course sides, uh, the sides next to preserves or roads, there is an item in there. Now, we did talk to DEP about that, and it's, since it's similar work and it's the same ponds, we would not have to amend the facilities plan for, uh, for that work. So just to kind of clarify. So, uh, moving forward as part of that background still, um, to try to avoid issues that we've had in the past with bidding, regardless of the type of project, is we went through the pre-qualification process, just like you went through with the lake maintenance and the, um, and the conservation maintenance. And you'll see the, uh, the vendors who were, um, pre-qualified. I think we received, um, maybe like seven, and I think four of those were, were pre-qualified. So, moving forward, um, the facilities plan was approved by this board earlier this year, and it was then sent to DEP for their acceptance. They accepted it July ninth. At that point, they, um, allowed for the pre-construction activities to take place and to be funded through a loan. Um, the, uh, so, so basically, anything pre-construction-wise would take place through a loan, um, dating to July ninth. That only approved the pre-construction activity, so I want to make that clear, because, um, historically with SRF, you typically had one loan, it was for post-construction. They're now allowing the pre-construction to be a part of that. So, um, once the design is complete and the project is bid out to those pre-qualified vendors, um, you'll go through a second loan, and, and that will, you know, and those will ultimately end up being combined as far as disbursement and, and reclaiming those costs. So, uh, and feel free to stop me anytime as I go through this, because it's a very long, uh, memo. So the, uh, the pre-construction loan application, um, that is, has been prepared. We do need to get that. It, we don't have it before the board, do they, David?
The application, no.
No. We'll have that. I, that'll, hopefully at the next board meeting, but the timing on that is not critical, as, um, the, the approval from DEP of that July ninth allows us to go back regardless of the date of that, of that loan. Um, on page seventy-four, page two of the, uh, memo, under item two, the design alternative, that's where we actually looked at the non-residential side, and, um, just put a cost estimate down there for, if we were to look at doing coconut matting, which is a little more, um, accepting of doing your plantings, which should also help meeting your litoral requirements, if the board wanted to entertain that, it would be an estimated cost of about five hundred and thirty thousand for these lakes. So it would be an add of, of half a million dollars. Um, one of the items that we're actually gonna bring back before the board at the next meeting is, since, um, since this memo was prepared, we've received the survey data, and we're actually looking at the residential side. Right now, that design concept would have, the pricing has all of that side as, uh, as a residential side, as that full-blown ArmorMax. We're actually looking at where the true problem areas are, and if we... And if we can, um, cut back on the amount of ArmorMax and use coconut matting in those areas that aren't, haven't been historically prone to, uh, to erosion, we can save some dollars there. So you might be able to offset the cost of, um, of doing the non-residential side. So, but again, as it sits today, the board is only authorized moving forward with the, with the residential side.
We would not, if we chose to go that direction, it's included, or are you saying if we, if we chose to go with coconut matting on non-residential side, we have to update any documentation or we just choose to do it at that time?
We specifically, specifically called DEP actually today even to verify and they said we would not have to modify any documents. We would be fine just whenever we, um, submitted for the, you know, the loan, it would be at whatever that amount is. But we would not have to modify anything.
I like that approach.
And so what we want to come back before this board with is, um, you know, just as with the storage, is to come back with alternatives to show you. Now, that being said, the first 13, you know, lakes are the worst. I do think there are areas where we can definitely, um, cut back on some ArmorMax. But, you know, as, as you move forward, there'll be a lot more. So that may be something that helps. We're actually scheduled to submit next week to DEP, uh, draft design documents so they can bless it and approve for us to bid it. We're not in a position to bid it, but we need their blessing to be able to, to, to bid it. So we've, um, we actually have draft design drawings, um, now and we're just making some revisions. Tyler and I were reviewing those actually yesterday. So making revisions to, um, to those. On the, the next page, we actually have a schedule of, um, when we're actually planning, uh, on the remainder of the task. But before I get to that schedule, if you'll go back up to, um, that same page, but higher up. So survey has been completed. Design drawings have been, um, have been completed as far as draft. Our goal is to submit those to DEP next week. We'd hope to have those to the district, um, today, but it'll happen probably about the same time that they go to DEP. And the, the DEP is really just a formality. It allows us to, to go out to, uh, to bid once they bless it. We can obviously make changes to it, but, uh, we need their blessing. While DEP is performing their review, we'll actually prepare and submit to, uh, the board for our post-design services. So the services during construction. And, uh, one of those items that has been discussed and DEP will require it is the inspection services. So at the last board meeting, that was asked if that, if the, um, SRF funds could be used to hire a staff employee. I, I meant to clarify that in this. I did not clarify that in this. And I, and I said it at the last meeting and it's still true, is you cannot use the SRF funds to hire staff. But one of the requirements is you've got to have that inspection. So that can be done by us. It can be done by Gateway. You just can't use those funds to hire, um, staff to, to do that. Or it can be done by a third party, which I believe is, is Chris's, um, preference. And there's definitely merit to that because, um, it, uh, it just has a third party's eyes on it in case you have any issues, um, you know, from contractors or otherwise, he can be a third-party verification. So there's definitely, um, uh, some positiveness to that. Once the design is complete and ready, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll advertise and our goal is to advertise, um, around the first of the year. And, uh, putting that through the bidding process, you can go to the actual table now. So the, um, using the pre-qualified vendors, we believe we can accelerate that schedule and, uh, getting bids towards the end of the month, presenting that to the board, um, at the first meeting in February, which would give us about a month to award and, and actually, um, move forward with issuing a notice to proceed. Now, um, part of what we're doing with the design is we're actually looking at each of the, um, of the lakes. And part of what this board needs to decide too is how many are we going to, uh, to do? We have 13 and we talk about that in here. And, um, I think our recommendation is to do the first five. And, um, and that'll leave, um, eight remaining. And you can do those eight in either two years or one year, whatever you decide to do. But since this is, um, since this was a little bit of a, of a wet season and it's the first year of doing this, we don't want to do too much at, at one time. So we believe the five is, um, is a good number. And, uh, what we're actually doing is we're actually adding up the linear footage of the lakes. And each lake will be an independent bid and it'll be an independent item for notice to proceed and it will have an independent timeframe. So, um, what our plan is or what our recommendation is, is if we have five, we'll bid out all five of those at the same time, but as separate projects. If one vendor gets them and each one has a, uh, bid period of 90 days, the vendor has 90 days to complete the project, not 90 plus 90 plus 90 plus 90 and so on. So that is our recommendation and the reason is, uh, we think you'll get more competitive bids that way of the, uh, of the vendors.
If you bid them individual as opposed to a group?
Yes. And that way everybody is, is individually bidding on, on each, on each project. So it forces them to remain competitive for each, for each one.
Couldn't you run into, I mean, you end up with multiple vendors doing the work?
Is that a problem? They'd be working on different lakes?
We're okay with them doing multiple vendors.
Yeah, as long as they, you know, they all end up doing equal quality.
Well, I mean, we.
But, I mean.
We pre-qualified, you know, the, we went through that process. So, I mean, we.
Well, pre-qualified is one thing. I'm, I'm talking about actual performance on, you know.
Well, if, if we have issues with their performance, you know, we've got, we've got mechanisms that we can, you know, use to enforce, um, or fire them if, if it comes to that. But, um, I mean, we, we know these firms, um, I think we feel pretty confident with. I mean, you never know what, what, what crew you're going to get. They're, they're obviously unknowns, but, um.
I'm sure we'll have the right accountability and.
Well, you know, we had, uh, we, the, the last work that was, that was done, um, that we had two vendors that were doing work. One was Extreme Divers and one was, uh, I forget the, the vendor's name, but they came from the East Coast and they came highly recommended. And, um, their performance was.
Land.
Land shore and their performance was, uh, was, I mean, deplorable, I mean, to be honest. So, you know, yeah, just because you, you, we've pre-qualified, we've done the due diligence that we can do at this point. You know, you, you don't know until you get out there, but we've done the homework that we can do at this, at this point. So, I mean, if, if board's preference is to bid all, you know, all of them as one project.
No, I was just curious. I mean, it was just wanting an explanation of why, why you went with that approach, but.
Um, and then again, once we, moving on to the next, uh, to the next page, we put item five in here. Not suggesting that you do this, but this is an opportunity if, if Gateway wanted to pursue this. You know, it is a, um, you are a, a small, limited staff district and this does place a burden on staff to deal with that. But it is an opportunity to, um, uh, to purchase material, not only save, um, save taxes, but there is a benefit with buying all of the material at once because there's a significant savings in the material itself, not just the taxes, but, um, if, if you put five, five lakes out there and you have, you have four contractors doing work, they're buying, they're buying the material for the lake. And even if it was one contractor, they're going to buy the material for, for the lake. That unit price is significantly higher when they buy the, the lower quantities. And we know that because we've, we've experienced that already and discussed that with, with the manufacturer. So, um, although it's a, it places a little bit of a burden on Gateway, it just may be something that you want to, you want to consider if you can save, um, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, it may be worth, maybe worth considering.
And may, and we should have the space.
Well, the, the concept that we had, yes, sir.
But can't we also negotiate intermittent delivery?
Well, what we actually, one of the concepts that we had was the material doesn't take up a lot of space. You've got, you've got space over even towards the pool. You could set up, you know, a convex type storage unit for each, for each vendor and they would have their own. So you would order the quantity and have it delivered and each one would have their own unit. So they would be, you know, responsible for what's in their, in their unit. So there, there are multiple ways. You could definitely arrange for schedule at different times or whatever, but there are ways to, to deal with that. I think probably the biggest thing is just the headache of going through the, through the process. Again, once you get into construction, what, what we'll have during this development of the bid package is, is equating the amount of linear footage. So each lake will be, um, you know, will be quantified for a timeframe and, um, each one will be individual. So, um, when you get into construction, that's where, you know, staff's time will be, um, will, will pick up. You've got, you've got to be a liaison for the residents. You've got to be notifying them. You've got to be addressing their concerns and their questions. That's probably one of the biggest, um, components on staff's side because that's not really something that, I mean, it, that needs to be a staff component. As I mentioned, you will have that inspection side and, you know, you've got two or three options there. Of course, um, hiring an employee, um, keeping in mind that, you know, that employee would need to have dual roles because, you know, this work will only go on for a three or four-month period. And then if that employee's going to remain on staff, you've, you've got, you know, eight, seven, eight months, the rest of the year of that employee having another role. And then of course, doing that through Tetra Tech's contract or having a third party. And I, I think at this point, I don't think you're in a position to, I'm not going to speak for Gateway, but I don't, I, probably your third party might be your best bet at this, at this point. I don't think you're in a position to hire additional staff, but that's not my decision. However, on the project management side, that's something that, you know, we would typically handle anyhow. And that's the, the, dealing with the contractor, dealing with the pay request, dealing with all of those types of items, and handling those, those in-house type, um, services. The last item on here, and I'll apologize because it was intended to be included as, uh, as a part of this, is that checklist. And, uh, Diane, I think, was, was going to print them and it might've been provided at the last meeting, but the checklist essentially goes through, um, step by step, what the contractor's responsibilities would be, what we would do and then what Gateway, uh, would do in terms of dealing with the SRF process. So I know that was long-winded, but do you have any questions?
Board member quick. Thank you, Danny. The board's going to stand in recess for 10 minutes.